Colorado Springs has seen a lot of growth in the last decade. But it's a different story for neighborhoods in the southeast part of the city, which is facing its own set of challenges. Three candidates are looking to represent City Council District 4, which covers southeast Springs. Their current representative is term limited. From housing, public safety, to whether or not the city should annex in parts of the county, there are key issues the upcoming city council will have to tackle. Today, we'll hear the vision from those hoping to represent you in this special edition of News 5 at Noon.
Thank you for your question. Again, my name is Kimberly Gold. I am proud southeast Colorado Springs resident. And actually with the Southeast Strong Plan, I was part of a team that was advocating to get more community input for the Southeast Strong Plan. As we know, our southeast is very culturally diverse and vibrant, and has a lot of people who speak different languages. So we were championing for some Korean and Spanish input from our community members. And looking over the Southeast Strong Plan, I think it's a very strong plan. I'm very proud of the work that Yolanda Avila, our term limited council member, has done to be such a voice. And I think that we should work really hard within the parameters of the Southeast Strong Plan and the functions of the city to ensure that we're advocating well for our city.
Shariah. Yes, so I have, I was not a part of the focus groups that started it, but I have familiarized myself with the plan. I love that our community has come together in order to unify ourselves and unify our voice in order to bring the city council. And so I think that's an excellent thing that we've started. And again, I think it's a great starting place. My biggest concern when I see the Southeast Strong Plan is the longevity. Are we really building a community that can catch up to the rest of the city? Is it creating a strong foundation for an economically strong future?
Chauncey.
Yeah, I think I'm very familiar with the Southeast Strong Plan. And one thing that I think is very important around that that we talked about, that's been talked about around that plan, is economic vitality. That's one thing that I think I would really want to focus on, as well as affordable housing. I think that's one huge thing. I know that we do have a lot of affordable housing projects going into southeast. But I think there's opportunity to spread that and not just put it in pockets of the southeast, but all around the southeast and possibly all around the city.
Sticking kind of with the theme of economic vitality, and we'll begin with you Shariah for this next question. As you all kind of mentioned, the plan does heavily address economic development in southeast Springs. Something that we hear come up, especially when we're talking about development in southeast Colorado Springs, is gentrification. So how will you balance the character and culture of the southeast while attracting businesses that could grow it economically? You have one minute.
Yes, so I believe that southeast has a very unique culture, different from the rest of the city. When I talk with developers and even the Urban Renewal Association, their biggest thing is not gentrification. It's not destroying what the southeast currently has. It's adding to it. It's building a community that everyone can love and grow in. And so for me, my focus is creating partnerships with both developers and the community so that we're constantly collaborating on what is necessary and needed, the infrastructure, and then working to actually bring that to life.
And we do have 26 seconds. So just I'll ask you to just clarify, what are you looking for from developers when it comes to building in the southeast?
So just as a resident, you can walk around the southeast and see that we do not have viable commercial spaces. We don't have the same shopping centers, grocery stores. So specifically, things like that are what I'm looking for to develop. A strong commercial area within the southeast. We have pockets that we can utilize, as well as affordable housing within our lower southeast part of the city.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, when I think, when it comes to gentrification in the southeast, I think we also have to give very big, huge context to it as well. I think when some people think of gentrification, we also need to think about affordability, because I think that's the really huge aspect around it. Is it affordable? And in the purview of the city council, our job is demographic structure and housing of Colorado Springs, District 4, and the southeast neighborhood. And I think one thing that we can really do, and particularly look at especially, is ensuring that we use our home rule municipality authority to write regulations to ensure that there is proper, not only proper ways for them to build that is affordable, but ensuring that it goes just beyond just little pockets of the southeast and maybe not just in one part of the southeast, rather than the whole entire part. But I think that's something I'd love to do and work on with developers.
Kimberly Gold, same question.
Sure. When we talk about gentrification, this is the displacement of people who are the core residents of the southeast for the sake of development. And we need to build strategies that incorporate economic development without displacement. And we've got some really fun innovative projects that are going to be happening in the southeast, like Pinic Peak Innovation, which is supposed to add something like $1.5 billion to that economy, to our Colorado Springs economy. And what we should be doing is focusing on partnerships, like with Harrison School District 2. Many of the school board at Harrison School District 2 has endorsed me because of the work I've done with them as the president and CEO of the Colorado Springs Black Chamber of Commerce. We need to work on those kind of partnerships so that when opportunities arise through the development, let Peak Innovation, those jobs are going to our southeast residents. We're building a pipeline of southeast residents to our southeast economy.
And Chauncey, we'll begin with you for this next question. District 4 has a lower life expectancy than other parts of the city. This is in part due to the urban heat island effect, where there's a lack of trees and an abundance of surfaces like parking lots. Do you see this as a priority for your district? And how will you work to address it if you're elected on city council?
Yeah, I think it's a really huge, huge priority for our district. We were actually just at a forum a few days ago talking about that, and particularly around health and wellness policy. And southeast, like you said, has an expectancy for people to live 16 times longer than everybody else in the city. And that study was actually done in, I think, 2021 or 2020. So I couldn't imagine what it is like now if we did this study. So I think that's very important. One thing that I would work on is possibly looking at using tree canopies, because we have a really huge hot area. And I think it's about seven to 10 degrees hotter in the area compared to the rest of the city. I think looking at ways to do that are more innovative ways to, you know, bring, bring less heat to our, to our area. I think will help bring a better environmental aspect and environmental friendly place for the southeast.
And Kimberly.
Sure. You know, I live off of Circle, and I find it very fascinating that you can drive from Broadmoor, which is Lake, which becomes Circle, and we see such a difference in the literal greenery on different sides of the interstate. It is vital that we invest in our infrastructure, our green infrastructure in the southeast. Our temperatures are sometimes five degrees hotter. And they may not seem like a lot, but when we're talking about utilities, this puts a burden on our residents. And let's be honest, like to have access to green spaces, it does something for the vibrancy of who we are. That's why many of us live in Colorado Springs. It's absolutely a priority to work with different grants. Like I believe we were awarded the USDA grant so that we can actually implement more green spaces in our city. And we need somebody who's going to fight for that in the southeast.
And Shariah, can you restate your question? Yes, so we're talking about the urban heat island effect. Do you consider this a priority for your district? And if you're elected, what will you propose to help combat this?
Yes, so just the grand scope of, you know, talking about health and life expectancy. I think it's a larger conversation than just the green spaces. And for me, it is a priority. But to be honest, it's not the top priority. When I look at things like the southeast community plan, and it talks about healthy places and healthy people, again, I just go back to the economics. So I always want to get down to the root cause of why our, our community is not healthy. And a part of that is, again, the economics. Can we afford to have the grocery stores that we need in our area? Yes, we do need those green spaces. But on the list of priorities, honestly, it's not my top. It's making sure that we can afford the right healthcare, that people in our community can even afford to go to the YMCA in order to enjoy what we have in our own backyard. And then making sure that we also have the sidewalks and things like that in our, in our community so that we can get out and walk. So it's important, but for me personally, it's not the top.
Well, for this next question, we actually went out to Panorama Park in your district and talked to some voters. So this next question is coming from a future constituent of yours in District 4. It is a quick question. We'll be playing it on this monitor right here.
If you're elected, what will you do to protect our parks and access to the parks?
And Kimberly Gold, we'll begin with you for this question.
Sure. I think that, you know, our role as city council members, as future city council members, is to work collaboratively with our community, with our residents. And one of the things that troubles me is when we look at representation for our boards and commissions. We have about 30 to 40 boards and commissions that represent the city. These are advisory committees that, that give input to our city's leaders. And we look at representation of District 4. We only represent 4% of committees and boards of, of committee input, excuse me. Conversely, we look at districts 3 and 2. They're sitting at 29 and 27%. We need to work to get more people, more voices to the table of the southeast so that we can all fight together to champion for our trails, our open spaces, our parks, and to preserve the beauty of Colorado Springs.
Shariah.
Yes, honestly, just to add to that, I would say, you know, as a mom with three young kids, we live at the park. We were actually there when you were doing some of those interviews that day. So I appreciate the work that you did in convincing people to ask questions. But for me, in order to protect our parks, it honestly is not just the collaboration, but making sure that we're identifying all the parks that need improvements. And again, working with those boards and commissions to improve them in the ways that are necessary for our residents.
Chauncey.
Yeah, I think it's really important for our parks. As you see, Panorama is a great example of what parks can be, not just only in southeast, but be the rule for what it can be in the city of Colorado Springs. And I believe one thing that we can do to help not only take care of that park, but other, other parks as well in the southeast, is really focus on our TOPPS. I know a few years ago, we had voters had to decide if we wanted to put our TOPPS in the share to 75% to, to pay that forward and keep our open spaces and parks there. I mean, I think that's one thing that we should look at. Maybe possibly doing a permanent tax. Of course, not, not city council bring that up, but allowing the voters to choose that. But I think that's very ample opportunity to do that so that we could help, again, make, make the rule and not the example.
I want to talk about housing now. Southeast Colorado Springs has seen different solutions compared to other parts of the city. For example, turning the former Hotel Elagante into an apartment building. What are some other solutions that should be considered in making housing more affordable in the southeast? Shariah will begin with you for this question. You have one minute.
Yes, so there are a lot of tools in the toolbox of the city council in order to bring forth affordable housing, as well as just collaboration. Again, I think the city of Colorado Springs is really based on collaboration. So I love even what Harrison School District has done to bring affordable housing to the teachers. I think more partnerships where we get to talk about some of the innovative things that we could do. To be honest, I'm not sure of all the things that we could do. There's a lot of conversation, I think, that still can be had in regards to using different spaces that are available within the south part of Colorado Springs, producing the, the variety of housing that's necessary. So I don't have a concrete answer for you on that, Allison, but I do think a lot of it begins with collaboration of, again, the developers, as well as the people in the community, to see what's necessary.
And Chauncey.
Yeah, I would agree. I think housing stock is very important for us in southeast. And we've found ways to be very intricate and very innovative with the ways that we do that. There's ample opportunity to do more. My time working as a legislative aide and interning at the state Capitol, there's numerous state, state initiatives and state bills that come down that don't, don't mandate, but incentivize and ask for us to help and ensuring that we can do a better job in serving our citizens. And there was a bill that just came out last year, Senate Bill 2494, and working around construction defect and sort of that issue and tenants' rights and sort of that. I think finding a way how we could work with our state, our state level to find ways how we could enforce that here, or if not, find ways how we could implement that here. Because again, we have home rule municipality, which I think is very important, allowing us to create rules for the best future that we see fit.
And yes or no, did you support that construction defects bill as it was written last session?
I, I personally did support it. There are some, some things that I personally would have taken out of provision or would like to see go a little bit further. But I know that they're, they're talking about that currently right now at the state legislature, trying to figure that out. But definitely would love to see that.
All right. Kimberly Gold, you have one minute.
Affordable housing is incredibly complicated. The whole housing crisis that we're facing is incredibly complicated. I just attended the Pikes Peak Housing Network State of Housing last week, a wealth of information. And what we're seeing is the homes that are being built right now, most of our residents can't actually afford them. And that is a problem, right? And a big part of that problem is construction defects, because developers and builders are, are struggling to build homes that could be affordable because of policy that, that stands in the way. So as a part of the Black Chamber, we did support the construction defect because we know that that is a pathway to affordable and attainable housing for our residents.
And we're going to stick with the housing conversation. This question comes from a community member in Colorado Springs, also at Panorama Park, not a future constituent though, I should mention. So we'll go ahead, and Chauncey will begin with you for this question.
Hi, I was wanting to know if you were elected for a city council, what your plans would be for making housing more affordable for the locals of Colorado Springs?
I think that's really important. Affordability is not just only a concern, I think, for the southeast, but everyone across the city, the state, and I think across the country right now. I think one thing that we could really focus on and do is implement some type of renters' rights. I think that's very important. I think if you talk to anyone that you run into right now, they, they are a renter, whether that's a mortgage or actually physically renting. I think it's very hard that, or very seldom that you find someone that is actually owning, like owning their home. And if they are, God bless them. And that's very, and that's very nice, you know what I mean? And that's, and that's good. But I think there's ample opportunity for us to help some of our renters with that, whether that's looking at the marijuana issue that, that just got litigated using some of that revenue to make, to make a fund for someone that makes over, you know, $400,000 to be able to get a little bit amount to help with their rent. That would go a long way for someone, so things like that.
Kimberly Gold.
Affordable housing is at the forefront of everyone's mind. We hear it from our, from our residents. We're hearing it all across the city. It is so important that we get the most important minds, who are our subject matter experts on this, get the input of our developers, of our builders. There's a really exciting project that's actually, should be happening in the next few years. I think they plan to break ground on it. It's going to be 333 units of affordable housing. This was done in partnership with federal and state, state level funding, if I'm not mistaken. We need to find more pathways like that so that we can give our residents housing that they, that they can love and live in.
And Shariah.
Yes, so I've asked a couple of people, you know, how do you unravel this affordable housing crisis? And many people come up with the same answers. They're, it's almost too widespread. It's too complicated to just narrow it down to one thing. It's kind of like Ms. Gold was saying. However, I always like to go back, again, just to the root cause of the situation. I think, you know, across the nation, we're dealing with the housing crisis and the affordability. You also have an issue of attainability. So when it comes to the southeast, we know that our residents are being hit the hardest because a lot of them are on the poverty line and in the margins. And so for me, it's a real focus, and I want to have a real concentration as a council member to make sure that we're pulling our families away from the margins. How are we, again, creating economic vitality? When we see the issues that are happening on the southeast part of the city, a lot of it boils down to the economics of it all. So the closer we're able to pull our families away from that poverty line, the more housing they'll be able to obtain and then afford when we begin to build into that.
Thank you. And we'll begin with Ms. Gold for this next question. It has been nearly five years since the creation of the Law Enforcement Transparency and Advisory Commission, or LETAC, in Colorado Springs. It was in part a response to an officer involved shooting that killed Devon Bailey in southeast Colorado Springs. How would you evaluate the relationship with CSPD in the southeast? And are efforts like LETAC working? Why or why not?
You know, the relationship can be very complicated with law enforcement. And we do not get to solutions by standing on different sides of the fence, sitting on different sides of the table. It requires having difficult, necessary conversations because our law enforcement, our, our first responders, they are part of the community just like anyone else. And we need to build relationships with our law enforcement. And I'm really proud to say that I've, I've earned the endorsement of our Police Protective Association, the, through the police. And I am so committed to building that relationship because that's what we need in order to move forward. We no longer need to sit on opposite ends of the table. We need to work together.
Shariah, same question to you.
Yes, so I believe that it has been effective in some ways. I've seen a lot of partnership with Harrison School District and the police and, and like you said, that board. There are greater things that can be done, I believe, in order to build some trust within the community and the police department. I completely agree that we should definitely stand with the police and not against them in order to establish a better working relationship with our community. And then just, again, taking that deep dive into how we can improve things like response times and things that will, again, foster a sense of trust in the community. A lot of people, they're depending on the police. They still desire to have that protection. They're just wanting to see it done better.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of history with this, with this particular question. Devon Bailey was actually a really good friend of mine. So this, this situation is very complicated for me. But I will say, I do agree, it takes both. And I think, you know, right now, we're seeing a tremendous, you know, I, you know, being honest with this whole entire question. I think right now, when it comes to the police and LETAC, they could be going further. I think there are a lot of other things that they can be doing. You know, I think in the whole entire thing, when we were asking for this, and when this thing was asked in 2020 after the death of Devon Bailey, was being asked for an independent auditor, which is something that Denver has and many other metropolitan cities have, which allows that person to investigate the police outside of the police investigating themselves. I think that's ultimately what people wanted, was asking for. And I think that will help build trust. And I think there's plenty of other ways and plenty of ways for legislation to happen like that as well. So yeah.
And sticking with the public safety conversation, Ms. Elliot Sterling will begin with you. Last time CSPD was at authorized strength was in 2019. If elected to city council, what proposals would you consider to recruit and retain officers?
Yeah, I thought about this question a lot. You know, it takes a lot to recruit. It takes a lot of financing to even recruit, you know, the police officers, more than it does to retain them. So I think, I, for us, I really think that it's an opportunity, again, to build within the community an understanding of the need for our police department, begin to work again with our school districts to foster a desire to go in. You know, we, we always go into the community and encourage them to join the military. But how often do you hear them encouraged to join the police, the, the police force or any service-based thing that you see in the community? So I think we could start there. And then, again, doing that deep dive to see how we can pull monies in to fund more recruitment and retaining our officers, to show them that we do care about their pay, their ability to afford a lifestyle that they so desire in the community, so.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both then. I think right now, I think currently we're about like maybe six or 80 officers short right now. I think when it comes to recruitment, it's, it's about who we're recruiting, you know? I think that's very important. You have to give overall context of that. I think if you go back to 2024, to, to January to December, I'm sure we have a lot of millions of dollars in lawsuits, from civil lawsuits, from people, from citizens, our own citizens maybe, that have sued the police department because of the misconduct that they have had. So I think it's very important paramount when we're doing these things to ensure that we have the right officers on the job. For example, I love our military, and I think the people that have done our service are very great people, but they go through a lot and they suffer through a lot. And if we're asking them to come pick up a gun and then go in our streets and defend, and defend people and be that person that says that our police department is right and just, are we, are we really doing that if, you know, if we're having that results also in lawsuits? So I think it's a bigger picture than just who we, it's not just a bigger picture of recruiting, it's about who we recruit as well.
And Ms. Gold.
You know, with rising costs, all of us have been asked to do more with less. And that's hard. And our police, our law enforcement, our fire, they're, they're no different. They have been asked to do more with less. And we're talking about public safety. We're talking about responding to life or, life or death situations. We have to go beyond the, the words of we support our police and we want to resource them. We actually have to dig in and actually do the work to properly resource them. They are paid 5% to 15% less. And what happens is we become a training ground, and they go leave to go to, to work somewhere else in a smaller city for more pay. We have to have the difficult conversations on how do we properly fund our city, those vital resources for law enforcement and fire. It is absolutely necessary. It is overdue.
And I will just add a few more seconds because I am curious because you brought up funding specifically. Where would this money come from? Do you have ideas?
Yes, I do. I think that there's innovative waves that we could possibly use. LART is a tourism tax. It does not, it does not impact most of us as residents. So there's things that we can do to increase LART, again, a tourism tax. And we have to have the difficult conversation because Colorado Springs is one of the only cities that's double tapered in Colorado. And we need to talk about our public safety sales tax. Like these are always not easy conversations, but necessary because, because if we're going to be a world-class city, we need to invest in our city.
And this question will be just for Mr. Johnson. You mentioned on your campaign website, finding resources for juvenile offenders in the criminal justice system. What resources do you envision being made, made available? And where would the city fit into this equation?
Yeah, no, of course. And particularly why I brought that up is because, you know, we were seeing, there's been a perception of high youth crime, particularly in Colorado Springs and in the southeast. And we want to make sure that we give them resources. Particularly, you know, I think there's opportunity. We have organizations here, like Community of Influence and other organizations within the southeast that do a lot of great work trying to entourage people and trying to do that work and working with the partners that we have here locally as well, at the state level. And the sense of funding, where that could come from? Again, looking at the marijuana tax, looking at the revenue from the psilocybin tax as well, from that retail tax, looking at that. I think there's plenty of ways to find ways to fund our city. It's just about, you know, are we willing to do it? And are people willing to get behind it? And I think there's ample opportunity to do that here. And I just think that that's possible.
So you think there are existing funding?
Yeah, I completely think there's existing funding. I think there's ample opportunity to make new programs and innovate ways that with current programs, they're going away. For example, our Critical Response Team, they're grant-funded. And, you know, we don't know what's happening right now with federal grants and everything like that. So I think that's important to look at that and see if we could retrofit that to a youth program or something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And Ms. Gold, you've mentioned wanting to advocate having, for policies that positively impact military families. What is the city not currently doing that you would like to see implemented?
You know, I, I think our city does a really good job, actually, of supporting our service members and our families. I co-chair the Military Spouse Community Coalition, and I believe in being a part of the change. So we often talk about our military and we focus on our active duty. Focusing our military families through the Military Spouse Community Coalition is something that I wanted to be a part of the change because there's a saying in the military, you recruit the service member, but you retain the family. And in order for us to, to be mission-ready, it means that we need to support our family members. And I'm really glad to be working with the Military Spouse Community Coalition, say that five times fast, so that we can actually figure out ways that we can better support our military families.
And Ms. Elliot Sterling, you serve on the city-county drainage board. Based on your experience on that board, what could the city be doing differently when it comes to managing stormwater infrastructure?
We have to audit our infrastructure more frequently. There are a lot of times where you see things that just have been overdue. And it's important for us, you know, to make sure that we're looking at stormwater and drainage on a, on a constant basis. You know, things so that the negative consequences won't happen within our city. And honestly, that's one of the biggest things. And honestly, that's one of the biggest things. I love that our Drainage Board has that partnership with developers and those that are coming in to create the communities that we love, and we give them that opportunity to create the infrastructure that's needed, and then, you know, we have that hand-in-hand partnership with them. But honestly, we just have to continuously go in and evaluate the infrastructure that already exists so that the negative consequences won't happen.
Thank you. Ms. Gold, we'll begin with you for this question, you all will answer it though. Voter turnout is historically low in city council District 4. In 2021, just over 5,600 voters participated compared to most districts, which saw a boards of 15,000, in some cases 20,000. Why do you think this is? And if you're elected, how will you work to reach voters, your constituents?
Yeah, you know, as part of the campaign trail, one of the things that all of us, I believe, are doing is door knocking. And I've been door knocking on every Saturday with the team. And I was talking to a gentleman and I said, hey, you know, I'm just letting you know, we have elections in April. And he said, I'm not voting. And I said, may I ask why? And he said, because my vote doesn't matter, nobody cares about what I have to say anyway. And I said, you know, sir, respectfully, I want to push back on that because we do care. And I said, we, your voice is your vote. And I think as elected officials, as leaders, it's our responsibility to connect back to the community. So for us, we plan on connecting back to the community through a podcast, through newsletters, through community activation. We have so many strong community leaders who represent RISE Southeast, Soler Rock Community Development Corporation. We have to engage more and have a two-way dialogue.
Thank you. Ms. Elliot Sterling.
Yes, I couldn't agree with Ms. Gold more. I want people to know that their voice really does matter. So for me, when, if elected into city council, I love door knocking. Honestly, it's something that I would continue to do periodically in order to engage with people. It's nothing like that face-to-face conversation that you can have with someone. Of course, you can always have a town hall or, you know, an event, but to be honest, there are so many residents, like you said, that aren't engaged. They're not looking for those, you know, those avenues or those interactions, they're not going to go to an event. But when you go to their door and say, hey, you know, we have this issue, I would love to hear about it, they are surprised and intrigued that you are there at their door, wanting to talk to them, wanting to get their input. And I think that that is a lost art in the whole context of even just sitting on the city council itself. It's not something that should just happen during elections.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I think someone that looks like you and represents you, you know, that's very much important to everyone in society, no matter what you go, whether that's news, politics, anything like that. And I think that's very important. I think, you know, getting, allowing people on the trail to see people like us, to be able to have the opportunity to possibly represent them, I think that's inspiring in itself. But one thing that I think I'll do most importantly, it's, you know, really like show up, you know, I think, and you guys have seen it covering me sometimes outside of this, I think, you know, there's a lot of talk about, you know, politicians and our officials giving just rhetoric service to our members and telling them, hey, you know, we'll do this and we'll do that. But when the time comes to be there for them, they're not there. And, you know, one thing that I've learned working in politics, it's a two-way street. And, you know, you have to have the community there to be with that principle, to back them up, and you also have that principle to be there with them to back up, rain or shine, no matter what happens. And I think I'll be able to do that no matter what, and no matter the case either, because I think that's very important, I think that's something that's very lacking, and it's very true, it's very telling to the numbers when you look at our results.
Thank you. An issue for people in Southeast, that people in Southeast Colorado Springs have also identified is accessibility to transportation, including multimodal transportation. How would you go about increasing access to various types of transportation in the Southeast? And Ms. Elliot Sterling will begin with you for this question.
Yeah, so I know a lot of the residents in the Southeast, we use public transportation, and things like Uber are not feasible constantly. So I think it's a matter of getting creative, again, with different partners that can help us to create, you know, we have the scooters and all of those things. I think it's about getting creative and establishing different incentives that will allow people to ride share or whatever in order for them to gain access to transportation. And again, just going back to the original conversation of how we structure our community, making sure that things are in walking distance. If we know that is an issue for our residents, let's not make things so difficult to get to, but let's begin to bring that community inward so that people can access them the way that they need to.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I think it's really important, I'm actually surprised our city has not gotten sued sometimes. I mean, when you look at the ADA, the accessibility laws and federal laws when it comes to compliance, I mean, usually when you're walking down a street, a regular street, it's supposed to be able for two people on the right, two people on the left, to walk whichever direction they may choose. And if you go down the Southeast, you can't do that at all. I mean, even in a bike trail, you might have half a sidewalk and then another sidewalk. So finding ways, not just to work with federal partners, to like really work to get state grants and also federal grants, to make sure that we are working on our roads and bridges and stuff, you know, they have the famous infrastructure week, you know, really pushing that, ensuring that we have the best infrastructure and really ensuring that, as well as looking at Colorado Springs, especially in South Park and Raleigh, so we can get more ways to innovate our transportation when it comes to the bus routes and everything like that. And making it more accessible too, because most of our metro, our metro buses are federally funded and we have a federal freeze right now, so making sure that's accessible through it.
Thank you. Ms. Gold.
You know, I want to start off by taking the time to shout out our current council member, Yolanda Avila. This is an area that she's championed for and we've seen progress in. Originally, from the Southeast to get to Garden of the Gods, to our Citizen Service Center, it took two hours. As of now, it's like an hour and a half, and we've still got work to do, we've just got a lot of work to do. But I think we should annotate that work has been done and that legacy work needs to be continued. There's a lot of public-private partnerships that can happen. Peak Ride has a very interesting program where you can actually rent bikes for a very low cost, depending if you meet certain criteria. So getting more information on what those public-private partnerships will look like, working with PPRTA to really find out, like, how do we get to the root of the problem? And me personally, I sit on the board of the Independent Center, and we advocate for those with disabilities and curb cuts, these are all things that we champion for so that we can have a more accessible Colorado Springs.
And we are getting towards the end, so this next question, I am actually going to shrink your response times to 30 seconds each because I want to make sure that everyone has their full two minutes for their closing statements. We'll begin with you, Mr. Johnson. So city council also serves as the utilities board, which last year approved a five-year rate increase for utilities customers. How will you impact, how will you balance the impact, excuse me, of rate increases on customers and the need to accommodate infrastructure for our growth?
Yeah, I think utilities is very, very important. I think, you know, asking someone or anyone on city council that comes in every four years to understand a billion-dollar budget is very difficult and very hard to ask, but so, you know, give them grace that they're doing that. But, you know, when we look at everything, I don't think necessarily when I've looked at and I've sat down with utilities, it's going up $10, $10, I think, every year, I think around that or $9. And that might not seem bad to the average eye, but when you have other things like gas and everything like that, it is important. So I would focus on that, but I would have to look more into the budget and see where we can find those things.
And Ms. Gold, again, 30 seconds.
Investment in infrastructure is critical. It may seem like a small thing, but investing in green spaces does help cut our utility costs, so that's something that we should be looking at. I've spoken with Colorado Springs Utilities, actually I'm meeting them later after this evening, this afternoon, as a follow-up to continue the conversation. It is a tough road, but we have to invest in our infrastructure.
Ms. Elliot Sterling.
So, you know, I believe a part of what city council does is they review the budget and those rates every year. So for me, being a part of city council, I would make sure that we're combing through those rates in that yearly budget, even though they did submit the five-year plan, just making sure that we are still staying in line and not overburdening our residents in the rate increase year after year.
We are now going to head into our closing statements, and we will begin with Ms. Gold for the closing statements. Again, reminder, candidates, you have two minutes.
Hi, neighbors and fellow Colorado Springs residents. My name is Kimberly Gold, and I'm here to be a voice for you in the Southeast. I have the privilege of being military-connected, and one of the things I say is the military can give us a lot of opportunities. And as a military kid turned military spouse, I've gotten so many opportunities, I'm really thankful for that. But the one thing the military can't do is give you a home, unless they send you to Colorado Springs. And Colorado Springs gave me a home. I'm here to serve, I have been, I have been serving, and you want somebody in your city council that's going to fight for our fair share in Southeast Colorado Springs. We have historically been underrepresented, and we need a strong voice to work with all of our partners in the city and our nonprofit partners, those public-private partnerships. Thank you.
Hello, friends and family. My name is Sharia Elliot Sterling. I'm a stay-at-home mom, I'm not a politician, I'm a resident just like you all. And to be honest, you should vote because although we understand that a lot of us are discouraged about the political process right now, it's so important that in District 4, we have the courage to believe that our district can again become a land of opportunity. And we don't need more politicians that just know all the facts. We need someone who is desperate to see the change that is necessary in our community. We need someone like, that is going to fight for us, we need someone that also has a vision for the future, that's not just pacifying those symptoms that we see year after year, but that's committed to actually getting down to the root causes of why our district is where it is and making sure that we hold ourselves accountable to see the change. So I would encourage you, don't give up, but to vote in this April 1 election and to make sure that you vote for somebody that you believe is going to get you the change that you need.
Hello, everyone. Chauncey Johnson, 25 years old, I've lived here my whole entire life, raised by my great-grandparents, they had the opportunity to raise me, and now I have the opportunity to take care of them and take care of the rest of the community that's taken care of me since then. And I believe I do bring a future. The fact that I'm 25 years old and that we do want the best what's for our future for our children and for the future residents of Colorado Springs, I think I could believe that. As well as the policy experience I have working at the Capitol with numerous people, I believe I've seen good policy and I've seen bad policy. And I know how we could implement that to ensure that we make good policy, not just only for right now, but for the future of Colorado Springs. And I believe if you vote for me, if you would like to choose me on your ballot day, you're not only voting for someone that cares about renters' rights, you're voting for someone that cares about you, that cares about your safety and wants to know what really is hurting you and pressing you the most. And so I encourage you to visit my website at chaunceyjohnsonforcouncil.com, and I appreciate your time and thank you KOA for throwing this today. And thank you all, and please vote for me, Chauncey Johnson, today.
Okay, and candidates, you know you all have two minutes. Since you guys only use about half of that time, I am going to fit in just one more question here before we head out today. And we'll begin with Ms. Elliot Sterling. As conversations have come up about increasing city council pay, is this something you support? As many of you all know, pay is just a little over $6,000 a year. If so, should that pay be increased and how should it be funded? One minute.
Yes, so, like I said, I'm a stay-at-home mom. And so for me, and I'm not a stay-at-home mom that has a luxury of money, you know, I'm just your average citizen. So when I signed up for this position to run for city council, I understood that it would be a sacrifice, and I think that anybody that takes on this role should understand that. However, I do think that opening up that spectrum of pay would allow for us to get a variety of people that care about their community just as much as all of us do, and would allow them to become active and contribute in a powerful way. So for me, I do think that we should increase that pay. How much, I'm not sure, because it has to be reasonable. We have so many districts that we must cover, but I'm sure that within the grand scope of our budget, we can find some ways or some ways in order to make it work.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I would definitely agree. I think it's important, the pay will ensure that we have more opportunity, more opportunity for representation, more opportunity for options. And I think that's really important. I wouldn't put a number on there as well, I would agree, I think it's very hard to do that. We've seen that done with other municipalities, you know, whether that's something that we decide, I think that's something that we should wait until we get on council to decide, but definitely, I think, should be of a huge conversation around. And I also think that if that decision is made this year with the current city council, that they should not reap the benefits of that until a certain period of time, you know, so then there's no transparency.
And Ms. Gold.
With the city council pay being just over $6,200 annually, it limits candidates to independently wealthy, retired, or those like us who are willing to make a deep sacrifice to serve our city. And what that does is it limits the pool of applicants, and that is a disservice to our city. Our city deserves better than that. And again, we have to make some investments, so I'm absolutely in support of raising city